Two, we'll go ahead and proceed with our town council agenda. Um, please proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all, all.
Uh, moving into roll call, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five counselors present in the chambers and two, including myself, on joining remotely. And I believe Council McClure is also traveling at this point. Um, so we'll give him a little grace as he joins them remotely. And again, I am traveling as well, but I shall, I'm en route to the chambers and I shall see you shortly.
Where's Council McClure?
I'm, I'm traveling, but I should be in the council chamber shortly also.
Moving into announcements and presentations. Mr. Town Manager, do we have any presentations or announcements that we need to cover at this time?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving into statements and petitions, we will toggle between remote and in-person petitions. Please state your name, full name, your address, and you have three minutes to adjourn the council. For those joining remotely, please raise your virtual hand to be recognized. And, um, Ms. India, we will start with one in-person citizen statement and petition as we give folks a little time to raise their virtual hand remotely.
My name is Cornell Lewis. I stay at, um, uh, I forgot, Applewood Road, I'm sorry. Been a long day. Uh, I would like to thank the, uh, City Council of Bloomfield for allowing me to speak here today. Uh, I'm here to hear what the people have to say and what the city council has to say as it relates to agenda item, possible agenda item 2023 hyphen 27, uh, hiring somebody to review or to investigate the hiring practices of Bloomfield as it relates to city employees. There are rumors in the ether, I don't know if it's substantiated by empirical evidence or just anecdotal, that, uh, things are not kosher, if you know what I mean, when it comes to hiring practices. So I'm here for that. And also I'm interested in hearing about Officer Rohan Green, if somebody's going to talk about it, and his petition for, um, a pension. And so some things need to be talked about, and maybe we will talk about them today. As Euripides said in ancient Greece, the tragic writer, "The force of words can do whatever has been done by conquering sword." And so I hope the words today will be truthful, honest, and that we will come to some resolution about agenda item 2023 dash 27 and Officer Rohan Green. Thank you.
Please note, it looks like Council Debethan Brown has joined us in the chambers. So believe we have all council members present and accounted for. We will move to a virtual comment. Uh, Mr. Carl, definitely now.
Hi, can y'all hear me okay? Yes. Uh, good evening, councilors. Thanks for this opportunity to talk to you all again. First of all, as always, thank you very much for your continued service to the town. I am aware that your volunteer position to serve our town takes a lot of your time and effort is often a thankless job. So thank you very much for all that you do on our behalf. Um, I noticed on the agenda this evening, uh, there was a topic of retaining an HR consultant. And given the latest hiring and job flight challenges we've experienced in Bloomfield, I believe an independent review would be a prudent decision and could help both the council and the town manager identify and address potential problems in this period of instability. Getting an independent and unbiased perspective to evaluate culture and how existing rules and best practices are being followed would address any concerns of subjectivity. Um, these hiring and retention issues are not unique to Bloomfield. Similar challenges are also playing in various public and private sectors. And getting assistance to help the town navigate today's unique staffing issues seems to me to be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you all for your service. I really appreciate all the time that you guys give to this town. Um, I know it takes a lot of your time, like the previous speaker said. My name is Annalysia Cruz. I'm a Bloomfield resident. I haven't lived here long, um, but it has become evident that there are a few things that need to happen in order to have an effective town council and town management. Um, I fully am in agreement with the proposed HR outside review happening. I think it's really imperative that we have some outside eyes on what's happening and get some advice. Because there's some conflicting information that's going out from various council members. Um, I did my own research and I've come to my own conclusions. I encourage all of you to do the same. Um, I think there is a history repeating itself um, with a particular employee. And I think that it's imperative that we find out what's going on. So I appreciate it. And I thank you for putting that on the agenda and I hope you guys follow through. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me all right? Um, this is Donna Hubs. I live at 16 Brook Street here in Bloomfield. Um, been here 95% of my life. Um, and I too appreciate everything that the council does. I do believe however, that, um, we need to find a way to get along and to work together. Um, I'm not sure how you accomplish that completely, but, um, we really need to, to make that work. We're starting to look a little silly. Um, I am also in favor of hiring a consultant. Um, I'm a little concerned to hear that several, um, leads of the different departments are, are leaving. And I think we need to figure out why and how we go about hiring, because we're certainly going to have to do some hiring and we're going to need to bring in good people. So I think if we, um, can figure that out, um, that would be in the best interest of our town. So I hope that you will vote for that agenda item tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, council and council members. I too am in favor of the item on agenda 2023 dash 27. I want to know what's going on in the town. And I don't think that, uh, there would be any question as to whether or not we should have some investigation on the town's premises of what's going on. Nothing's better than doing a pre-emptive track before moving forward in any of these items on this agenda. So I'm looking forward to hearing about it as well.
India, are you getting the names and the addresses of those who have made comment? I don't hear. Can you repeat the gentleman who just, um,
Thank you.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Renata Lovelace from 126 Sutton Place. I am also a business owner in Winston Berry Mall. Um, so I've been hearing the term eminent domain, um, thrown around pertaining to Winston Berry Mall. And I just wanted some more clarification on what that would entail and how would that impact my business?
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you to you all for your service. We understand you're doing this in addition to your day jobs. I'm not sure that all of us could do it, so thank you. Uh, my name is Donna Winock. I live on 32 Arrow Wood Lane. I've written down a couple of things to make sure I don't go off track. Um, I've lived in Bloomfield for seven years. I've been paying attention, probably about three. Um, this is the first time I'm making any public comment. And, um, I just want to state that I'm not affiliated with the Democratic Party or the Republican Party. And my opinions come primarily from what I see and what I hear. Um, I'm not a long enough resident to truly be in any kind of group. So I, there's a lot that you guys know that I don't have a clue about. Um, but because it's relevant, I want to share that before retiring, I was an HR executive and a consultant focusing on mergers, acquisitions and divestitures. So I've got significant HR experience, I think, and, um, have had to deal with an awful lot of organizational conflict during my career. Um, I'm here to speak actually against the hiring of the HR consultant. And the reason is, I would like to understand what we know right now. And again, I'm speaking from the outside looking in. I don't know whether HR, because we have an HR group, has been engaged to speak about any exit interviewing. I don't know whether, um, the HR department would tell us that we've been competitive in our hiring or we've not been. I think there are a variety of answers that we could get if we, um, put our administration committee to work to request some of the things that I think Councilor Rickford has laid out in his proposal for, um, for a consultant. Um, it's not that I don't like consultants. I did that work for 20, 20 years or so. Um, but I do think that there's a little bit of work that could be done here before we make that expenditure. I'd also like to say, and this, this comes from my heart, that reading through some of the materials that were included here in this packet, seeing the back and forth around the position in question, and then looking at the information about the consultant feels a little bit conflict laden and a little less objective than I guess I would like to see it. So while I don't want to speak poorly about anyone, I do want to say what it feels like. I think the optics are not great. And, um, so I think that's probably for me. I, I veered away from my comments, so thank you all for your patience.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Renee Coleman Mitchell. My address is 21 Burnwood Drive. And I am in complete support and concur with those who support hearing more about the item 2023 dash 27. Um, I do respect the woman, I think her name was Ms. Donna. I didn't get the complete last name. I think that what she presented just a moment ago in regards to what we can learn, I think that it would be best to have a consultant come in with an unbiased um, background to answer those type of questions and concerns that she just addressed. So again, I am in support of full discussion, disclosure, transparency, and having a consultant come in and supporting 2023 dash 27. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wong, Town Counselors, Manager Hawthorne. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Um, and here's what I want to say. Um, I have read the proposal to hire a consultant to review the Bloomfield Town Manager's hiring practices as, as submitted by Councilman Curtin. I have also read the background material in series of emails between Councilman Curtin, Town Manager Hawthorne, and Attorney Needleman. And honestly, I believe the messages from Mr. Hawthorne and Attorney Needleman contain the most credible information. To be clear, I am in total support of Mr. Hawthorne and feel he has acted in complete accordance and compliance with the town of Bloomfield's human resources standard practices. I believe the proposal to hire a consultant to review the hiring practices is totally uncalled for, and I do not support using $50,000 of our town's resources for this purpose. I urge the town council members to vote down this unnecessary proposal. Thank you very much.
Okay, there you are.
I'm sorry, um, Ms. Crowsdale Mills, um, did type in the chat that she was in support of the, um, item that we're discussing with hiring the, um, HR consultant. In person, we have Madunzi Graham Days.
Good evening. Uh, I have a couple of things I'd like to discuss. One, I'm, I'm completely perturbed and a bit taken back how some council members, specifically the mayor and Councilman McClurey, will paint a picture for the public as if council doesn't want to keep Mr. Hornton on as our town manager. To my understanding, and if you can correct me if I'm wrong, the issue is, is that he made a request for increases outside of what had been agreed upon in his contract. And now it's given the impression that the town is, is basically being held captive unless we bend to his will and his wants. Which kind of leads into this new proposal in terms of hiring. Because after a four-year contract has been signed and you're within the first year of your contract without even meeting your first anniversary, feel as though you're entitled to more than you agreed to less than a year before. So if this is your expectation as the leader of the town employees, then how is it that you treat the town employees? Can they just come to you and say, "I don't like the evaluation you gave me. I don't like what we agreed upon. I'd like to amend that effective immediately." I think that that's unreasonable. To some of the same council, with the exception of McCrery, he wasn't on town council prior to Robert Smith's hiring. But some people in this room were on council and were affiliated with the decision that had been made prior to Robert coming, that an organizational chart be created. Okay, that a metrics be put in place to quantify what we're paying the staff of this municipality. Robert did not deliver on what his number one task was to be. And as far as I could see, Mr. Harton has not done so either. So I think that it does have to be addressed. And I think at this point, since there's so much contention between some members of council and the town manager, that it would only be right that an outside, independent person come in and set the record straight, set the tone, and provide assistance to actually making this organizational chart and this, this metrics a reality. Because if not, regardless of who is the town manager, who are the employees, you're going to always have this problem. It doesn't matter who the council people are, you're going to have problems as long as it hasn't been rectified. And I think right now, before it becomes more of a problem, that it's rectified and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next virtual person is Brianna Valentine.
Just for clarification, somehow I, I logged in under my daughter's Zoom. It's Adrian Valentine. No, it's fine. It's Adrian Valentine, 21 Bretwood Drive. And I am in full support of us getting an outside, objective consultant to come in and to help us identify the issues at hand and to help Bloomfield move forward. It's not a this side or that side. It's a how do we move forward based on the issues at hand? We have a lot of information going out, some of it accurate, some of it not. And I think that we need an internal, I mean, external entity to come in and really flesh out the issues at hand. Our town is too important and too special. We need somebody unbiased to be able to help us move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. In person, next is Janet Riley.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janet Riley and I live at 4 Rita's Way. And I was moved here around 14 years ago by my husband who's lived here all his life. And ever since moving here to Bloomfield, I've come to find Bloomfield to be a very beautiful and peaceful town. I have never been to one of these meetings before and I wanted to make sure I came to voice my family's opinion on 2023 dash 27. I am in full support of an independent consultant coming in for two reasons. One, to identify some of the issues that have been brought about. And two, to provide transparency for everyone. Now, I've heard that people, um, make statements about they're not a Democrat or Republican. This has nothing to do with what side you're on. This has to do with the town, this beautiful town of Bloomfield and its residents. That's all this is about. I don't care what side you're on. We need transparency. We want to make sure that, um, Bloomfield is being taken care of and loved. Someone also mentioned about, um, the cost being $50,000. I saw that on this document as well. We have no idea what the cost will be because no one has investigated what it would cost to bring someone in yet. This is just a number on a paper. Until we do the research, we have no idea what it would cost. And as a matter of fact, I just found, just sitting here listening to everyone, we found, got new information. We're talking about a pay raise to someone. Now, if you're willing to give someone a pay raise, be willing to pay for an independent consultant who will bring some transparency here to our people who have questions.
Thank you. There's no other virtual hands, so I'm just going to go to the next in person, which is Paula Jones.
Paula Jones, 5 Bear Ridge Drive. I have a two-part statement tonight and I will try to do all within, uh, five, three minutes. Um, first, good evening, Madam Mayor, Counselors and Town Manager Hawthorne. On behalf of the Conservation, Energy and Environment Committee, I'd like to thank all those who helped plan and promote this year's Shred and Electronics Recycling Day on November 5th. Staff from the Town Manager's Office, Social and Youth Services, Senior Services, Leisure Services, Public Works, and the Police Department all helped CEEC plan and publicize the event. Bloomfield Public Library has also promoted it. The CEEC especially acknowledges Assistant Town Manager Sharon Howe, Social and Youth Services Director Camilla Hillian, Senior Services Director Yvette Pennell, Mark Mitchell, and India Rogers for their help. In addition to CEEC members who volunteered at the event, I want to acknowledge town residents who volunteer for this event year after year. I'd also like to thank all our neighbors who generously donated to the food bank and to apologize to those residents who arrived after the shred truck filled. The event starts at 9:00 AM and the shredding portion continues until 1:00 PM or the truck is filled. The shred truck always fills before 1:00 PM, but this year it filled before 10:00 AM. Yeah, we regret that some of our neighbors were disappointed. Okay, now I'm going to ask for money. CEEC's annual budget allocation has been $1,500 for years. With that allocation, we can provide one shred truck at one shred day event annually. CEEC has been getting requests since last spring to offer a second shred day. Given the popularity of this service with our neighbors and the fact that the shred truck fills earlier every year, we need two trucks so as not to turn away our residents. So on behalf of CEEC, I am asking the town council to allocate an additional $1,500 to our budget to support a spring shred day with two trucks. We need a commitment from the town as soon as possible in order to get on File Shred's calendar for late April or early May. I checked that today. So we respectfully request an answer from the town within one month. So thank you for your consideration. Okay, part two. I'd also like to make a brief comment about agenda item 2023 dash 27. I am representing myself only, just myself. I hope you all read, um, within pages 44 to 59 of the council packet, the email exchanges between Councilor Curtin, Town Manager Stanley Hawthorne, and Town Attorney Mark Needleman pertaining to this item. I encourage you all to read those pages and draw your own conclusions regarding the motivation behind this. My conclusion is it's a witch hunt targeting the town manager and assistant town manager. So from my perspective as a taxpayer, I can think of far better things for the town to spend $50,000 on. I hope the council will not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Calhoun, in person.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Calhoun. I'm at, uh, 383 Park Avenue and prior held position on town council. Good evening, uh, Mayor Wong in your absence en route and, uh, town counselors. Thank you for your service. Um, there is a lot going on, uh, right now in town, unfortunately. Um, there's a lot of scuttlebutt. There's a lot being had that has been written and will continue to be written until this is resolved. It may never be resolved. Every town has their issues. Everyone knows that. But, uh, in light of this, I think for us to have objective opinions to analyze what actually is happening, I think we do need an independent consultant to come in. Hopefully it will not be $50,000. Maybe it won't take as long as what we need. I understand there's, and, and we can FYI, and it has been done, all of the communications between our town manager, um, Rickford Curtin, excuse me, Councilor Curtin and the town attorney. But yes, it could be, um, differences of opinion, yes. And we will always have that. But when it comes down to the business of the town of Bloomfield and as currently and always have been for over 30 years, taxpayer for the town of Bloomfield, I think that we do need to shed some light, more light on, um, what is happening to at least resolve and/or if, because we've lost three key positions. And our town manager, you know, it's in writing. He's been, he, he's not threatening to leave, but he's interviewing. he's not threatening to leave, but he's interviewing elsewhere. So it's time that we resolve a lot of these things, a lot of these issues. So I am in full support of HR 2023-27. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in person is Kevin Goff.
Thank you, Kevin Goff, 5 Bear Ridge Drive. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Town Manager. First of all, I want to thank again the council for holding live public meetings so the residents can attend and participate. I do hope the council's subcommittees and other boards and commissions will soon follow suit. As I've said before, I have no problem with truly hybrid option, but that means so much more than just allowing people to join remotely. All participants should be visible, and everyone should be able to see everyone else, council staff, and the public. However, I'm compelled to be here tonight due to the final item on the regular council agenda dealing with the consultant, the request to spend $50,000 for a consultant to quote, "review and investigate," unquote, "town hiring practices." Really. First of all, and ever some people have advised this, in reading the email chain included in the council agenda, there's no justification for this request. This is motivated by one counselor, Mr. Curtin, who seemingly won't accept the facts presented if you read the email chain. The tone of the emails that Mr. Curtin is harassing, disrespectful. And I actually asked the council to address this fact, this ongoing problem. Bloomfield has better ways to use $50,000, as has already been noted by several speakers. And, you know, I find this strange, that Mr. Curtin is one of the counselors who often expresses concern over spending money and keeping taxes low, but it's just political posturing. While he voted for the 2022-23 budget, which included hiring a number of new positions the town manager is working on to try to fix some of those gaps within the town, he actually now seems to be vehemently opposed to spending quite vocally. Yet, throwing away $50,000 for a fishing expedition, that's okay. So the problem here is that some counselors have created a hostile work environment for our town manager and his staff, and it has to stop. It has to stop. Currently, we aren't the nicest town in Connecticut. We're the craziest. Okay? And I did want to make an additional remark based on what Ms. Graham Day said, because she's partially right. One of the things the council, when I was on the council, put in place was what was called the Matrix Report, which was an attempt to start getting benchmarks for the metrics and look at a reorganizational study so that that manager, Smith, when he came in, could start doing some of the things Mr. Hawthorne has been doing in terms of looking at our structure and reorganizing our structure. But it's incorrect to say, and that report was never finished, but it's incorrect to say that was Mr. Smith's fault. It was a combination of things, and quite honestly, I've never been completely sure what happened to that. But Wes, we do need that kind of report, and that's the kind of thing Manager Hawthorne is already working on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in person is Jennifer Marshall Neely.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Manager, and Council. I am Jennifer Marshall Neely, 57 Cliffmount Drive in Bloomfield. It has been six days since the general election. And I am here to thank all of our Bloomfield neighbors who strongly supported me as I worked to earn the seat of the registrar of voters. And I stand here in front of Bloomfield to say that as the registrar of voters, politics stop at the door. I am here to support those who supported me and those who did not. And I humbly thank everyone who came out and voted, especially voted for in-person, early voting. I just want to say thank you so much. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Next in person is Michelle Adams.
Good evening, everyone, online and in person. Councilors, thank you for all you do in volunteering your time to our town. My first comment is directed to Mr. Hawthorne. Mr. Hawthorne, you cannot be upset at an objective review of your performance. You cannot be vindictive to those individuals who have decided to review you based on their evaluation within their scope. It was not a 360 review. So when, I'm going to stick to this so that way I don't get off track. The fact that you are seeking other employment out of Bloomfield should translate to your having to vacate the position. Bloomfield proper has qualified individuals in event you step down. Looking nationally doesn't seem to work, councilors. Look within the ranks of the town employees and citizens. The manager should not, a manager, the manager, should not arbitrarily place folks in any positions unless advertised or transparent if that's not what he was hired to do. Case in point, the Assistant Town Manager position was given to Mayor Wong's aunt, Sharon Howe. I don't recall seeing or hearing of any advertisement for said position. She may be very qualified for the position, but no one else had a shot at it. I do support Agenda Item 2023-27. Let's get to Officer Green. That's an HR problem, it seems like. Maybe the HR consultant can help find a whole lot not done the way it should be done. Previous speakers, Henrietta Hirschfeld, Paula Jones, who is the wife of Kevin Goff, have their personal agenda. When it comes to Councilor Rickford Curtin, it does not stop. His failed attempt for a rebid might have something to do with it. Councilor Curtin, continue doing your job. I do appreciate having someone such as you, as objective as you are. Do not be deterred. Do not be deterred. The object, the objections are basically, not all of them, basically coming from the same circle. It's the same pool. Good night.
Thank you, and that concludes our comments in person and virtually at this moment.
Good evening, live in council chambers. Thank you all for coming out and speaking. We'll move right on to the next part of our agenda, which is our council subcommittee reports. Education did not meet. We had to accommodate a council meeting, a special meeting. And so we will, we'll think about meeting in December or January, unless there's anything pressing from the staff that we need to address due to the upcoming holidays. Public safety?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Public safety met earlier this evening. Try and be very brief. The Health District is busy with flu and COVID vaccination clinics. It was reported that there have been more RSV cases and COVID cases over the last couple of months. But the Health District is providing clinics here in Bloomfield and in West Hartford. On the Fire Districts, we welcomed our new Center Fire District Chief, Chief Bernard, Bernard, I believe it is. And he talked about the redesigning of the new station on Tungstus Avenue. The station is also taking part in Turkey Drive along with the Blue Hills Fire District. It was sort of unremarkable with respect to the number of incidents that have taken place in both Fire Districts. There was a fire on, I believe, at 743 Blue Hills Avenue on September 30th. There were seven folks who were displaced, but there were no injuries. So we're keeping those families in our thoughts and prayers. There's an annual holiday lighting that will take place early December with Blue Hills Fire. Most of our time and attention was placed to police, the police report. There, again, the crime stats, there were no homicides, robberies, or sexual assaults for the month of October. There were 62 larcenies. The majority of those larcenies have taken place in the Capaco Shopping Center. There were three auto thefts. And again, it's a constant reminder to all of us, two of the, two of the three auto thefts were people leaving their keys or fives in the car. And the third auto theft took place, and the car was returned to the place where it was stolen three days later. We don't have much information on that, but that was an interesting statistic there, a fact. There are four vacancies on the Police Department currently right now. There are two recruits who are in the Hartford Police Academy with an expected January graduation, two promotions. There was a promotion sergeant, Jalissa Cuevas, to sergeant, and Detective Zachary O'Bright. The chief talked about some of the reasons for the shortage in offices right now, and a lot of it just has to do with what we've seen lately is the number of qualified applicants, benefits and compensation. Some of the potential officers are finding other opportunities in neighboring towns. There is a high interest in minority recruiting, so we're losing out on some of our local and minority candidates who are getting greater offers from other towns and cities. There were, on the traffic side, 48 accidents. There were four DWIs. And the traffic calming continues. I'm sure most of you have seen some of the traffic calming measures that continue to highlight a focus on Prospect, Woodland, Blue Hills, Philly, and Maple Avenue. We'll continue to report out, hoping to get more speed humps and other measures in town to sort of address some of the concerns that we've heard from residents. The chief talked about their CPR courses. There are a number of CPR courses that are taking place in town. If folks are interested, please look into, there's a Facebook page. We hope to put something on the digital boards and get some advertising through the library newsletter as well as the messenger so that the community will be made aware of the opportunities to take these classes. And then finally, there were a number of, seven uses of force incidents with the police. I think half of those had to do with individuals who were distressed with mental health issues. One had to do with takedowns, earned an escape. But there were no serious force incidents. And there was one kidnapping case that led to an arrest where there was a takedown. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Moving into committees on committees.
Thank you. We have not met since the last time we had council meeting. We were trying to have a special committee on committees meeting so that we can speak to the members that weren't able to come out to our regular meeting. I'm not sure that that meeting is going to happen, Ms. India. So we might be looking to December for our next committee on committees meeting. If we can pull a miracle, we might try to still have one at the end of November. Thank you.
Finance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee has not met since the last update that was provided to the council at the request of the town staff. Because of the transition with the Finance Director and the end-of-year audit, they have asked that we give them some time to focus on that, so we will not be meeting next Monday. But the town staff did say that they will send out the monthly statements to the council and post it to the town website. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Land use and economic development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Land Use and Economic Development Committee met in October. First, Dave Malesko, Director Parks and Rec, provided a brief status regarding Reservoir Number Two lease. The lease agreement is drafted by the State's Attorney Office and reviewed by the town attorney. It's recently been submitted back to the Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services Department to finalize and take appropriate steps to have the agreement executed. It was adopted and recommended to full council to enter into a 20-year lease agreement with the state of Connecticut in exchange for $1 and other valuable considerations concerning Reservoir Number Two. We also had a discussion and possible action regarding the Small Business Loan Program, which was introduced during this council session. We did meet with Windsor Federal Savings Bank and also in discussions with Headco regarding the creation of a Small Business Loan Program. Most Headco loans that can be offered to small businesses range between $10,000 and $20,000. It was suggested to go directly to the SBA for additional funding source options with a wider range to offer. Denise Rabito of Gomening York gave a brief overview of the draft proposal that is currently on board. The proposal supports funding amounts from sources such as the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, or Community Investment Funds, CIF, as being the best routes to fund this program. It suggested to have a third-party entity run this program to administer the funds in the amount of $350,000, and the program would allow up to allow $50,000 in administrative costs. There's an opportunity to submit this program for the second round of CIF funding, which is forthcoming. The application period will begin this month. So it's been supported by this committee. And if the proposal for the Bloomfield Housing Rehabilitation Program were considered tax abatements, this was one suggestion by one of the committee members. And then Councilor Curtin inquired if there's no approval with CIF funding for the Small Business Entity Fund. Can ARPA funds be used to support this program? There were further discussions. We will have our subcommittee meeting tomorrow. So if there is anyone that would like to come to that meeting, you are welcome. Oh, an explanation of CIF. That's Community Investment Fund. It's state funding. We were the recipient of CIF funds the first round to help with the library building fund. So where, there's another round of funds. We did submit the last time. We only funded for one. So we're resubmitting a couple of projects, I believe, in the hopes that we'll be able to do more in our community relative to Small Business Loan Funding and some other areas. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Golf?
Thank you. The Golf Committee met on last Wednesday at 6:30. It was a very brief meeting. It was pretty much 10 to 15 minutes. We received an overall review on the golf season winding down. We've had some really good warm weather recently, and that's benefited the course. But that was pretty much it. And one of the things that we're talking about is how to get our youth in town with the schools playing golf at the golf course. So that's something that we're going to be working on in 2023 to make sure our young people are involved in the course. And that's the extent of my report. Thank you.
Community Services.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, could I take one moment relative to some important information that I?
As it relates to your Community Services report?
Sure. Well, we had a Community Services meeting, and all of our departments reported to us in reference to, let me just grab it. We are scheduled for December 13th to meet again, but we met with our regular programmatic updates from Senior Services, Social and Youth Services, Leisure Services, and the Alliance for Bloomfield's Children. There was also a discussion to contribute some dollars toward the funding of turkeys. There's several groups in the community that are doing this, so we're thankful for their support. And that concludes.
That's it?
Community Services.
All right. Trails Committee.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We meet the last Wednesday of every month, and we have, we're excited to be that there, the extension of the, our bike path in North Bloomfield to Terriffill is underway. Those of you who have driven through the gorge on, I guess it's one eighty-nine, will note that there's all sorts of cones up and everything else as they clear the way to make the bike path go to Terriffill. So our, our road to nowhere will go somewhere as of next year. It won't be completed probably for another six months at least after, after the winter. But at least it's underway. Also, the town crew, thankfully, has completed the repair of our washout from last year so that the bike path is restored integrity. We still are waiting to hear a long-term solution for that, but at least it looks like it looked before the washout. And so I'm, we're happy about that. We're also applying for CIF money. Hopefully, what we're most excited about in going the other direction of the bike path is a proposed bike path going, I call it library to library, but it's actually from the center to the high school, which is already funded and planned. And then from the high school to Three Thirty Park, that neighborhood, which kind of connects the schools, would be nice with a bike path, be good for the kids. And then on from there to the Ranch Library in, on Blue Hills. So that would give us a, a bike path right across town as part of the East Coast Greenway, which would help with the funding and certainly would fill a real need in town. So we're kind of excited about that. That's about all it was. We'll be meeting again, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving into the business part of our agenda. I see Mr. Malesko has graced us on the screen here. Item twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, consider and take action regarding adoption of resolution entered into a lease with the state of Connecticut in exchange for a dollar and other value consideration concerning Reservoir Two located off of Wittenberry Avenue in a form acceptable to the town attorney. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Councilor Harrington, seconded by Councilor Merritt. I believe I heard Councilor Merritt second. Any discussion or anything to add? Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add regarding this item?
No, Mayor, but if there are questions, Director Malesko is on.
All right. Looks like there are no questions. We'll move and call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, consider and take action regarding adoption of resolution Park School Complex redevelopment athletic field light. My understanding, Mr. Town Manager, is that this item is pretty routine as it relates to acquiring state funding. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
So I move.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Davis, seconded by Councilor Mahan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye. The ma, the motion passes unanimously. Item twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, consider and take action regarding eight dash twenty-four referral to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission lease between the town of Bloomfield and Los Cogos Two Equity LLC. Do you have any background on this? Nancy, can you give us a quick background on this before we entertain a motion here?
Before you is a referral for a lease. This is with the owners of Wittenberry Mall for swing space lease for the library for their use during construction. Construction's estimated to take twenty-two months. This lease would begin January first with the library moving in at the end of February. It's been initially reviewed by the town attorney. We're in the process of final negotiations, but the, the terms I've identified in the memo that was included with your package, but it's within the budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's been reserved for this use. And the town attorney has recommended that it goes to eight twenty-four hearing with zoning. He also indicated there's no conflict with this particular lease. And the building committee has voted unanimously to recommend to the town council that we enter into this lease. They did look, take a look at quite a few other locations that were rejected for a variety of reasons, location, cost, size, the cost that it would take to make space suitable for the intended purpose. So they landed on this particular section. I think I included a copy of the floor plan, not the floor plan, the, the suites. And for those of you who are familiar with the mall from the Park Avenue side, if you're looking at the mall and you see State Farm Insurance, it's right to the right of that particular of that location. So if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any other questions or comments by councilors? Councilor Mahan?
Hi, Nancy. Thank you very much for that background information. I wish that we're provided with the detailed list of why some of these locations were considered and thus rejected for the specific locations. Because I do see the, you know, the summation basically that these locations are rejected due to location, unavailability, cost, extensive modifications, or unsuitability, but I wish we had a specific breakdown. Nonetheless, I'm, you know, I'm glad that we're at least, we at least found a home in the meantime for the library so that we can still provide services to our town. But I'm hoping that perhaps after this meeting or over the next few days, we can have an, a list that goes over why these specific other locations were not chosen besides just the very brief, one-sentence summation.
Sure. Deputy Mayor.
Nancy, just one quick question. Does the Wittenberry Mall location negate other locations in town that might be suitable for additional space, particularly for the Wittenberry, you know, McMahon branch?
No, it would not. As I explained in my memo, there was a, there's been a discussion about having a spot over on the east side of town that would be dedicated for computer use. So far, nothing has worked out. It doesn't mean that it's off the table. It's something that we can always add to if there's funds in the budget for it. And if it's something that the building committee approves on, but it was important for us to get a home in place before January first so that it wouldn't impede the construction schedule negatively.
Thank you, and I apologize for, for referring to it as a branch. It's the Wittenberry Man Library, so my apologies.
Councilor Curtin?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. I have a couple of questions. This is the Wittenberry Mall we're trying to go into lease with. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm a little concerned about that, especially with the discussion around the town and potential eminent domain and so on. That, to me, will be perceived as the direct conflict of interest. I'm not sure if the town attorney opined on this, but I believe if we're going down that path and decided to go into an agreement with them, it makes things very complicated because the town itself is saying that it's a desirable place to, to lease. And I think it complicates things, in my opinion. So it's something that I, I would not be able to support because I believe that it needed to be a little bit more. I think we need to answer those questions that could potentially kind of back us into a corner.
Actually, the town attorney did review this and recommended the town could move forward with this lease.
Yeah. I still don't feel once again, in, in sitting here and supporting the town potentially moving forward and, and taking that property, I, I'm no expert in that line, but it just seems that it would, and somehow give the owner an ability to kind of push back and try to come up with different reasons. So I'm a little skeptical about that, but thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Deputy Mayor, you are the liaison to the library building committee, and I know this, it was logged on when I asked this question to the town attorney. Did you want to weigh in at all?
I would just add that Nancy is correct that the town attorney said that there's no conflict because the timeframe in which the lease would take place would be shorter than the period in which the, if there's an eminent domain, it's likely to be for an extended period of time. So the lease would have expired before any eminent domain proceeding concludes.
Thank you. And Nancy, we're actively looking for additional space to bridge that, the gap between breaking ground and opening our doors for the new library space? Or is it just under consideration as far as?
It would be under consideration for something on the east, east side of town.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilor Harrington?
So I have a question. It was my understanding that there was some possibility of utilizing the MetLife space, and I do understand distance may have been at issue, but I'm, I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that.
Distance was an issue. The MetLife space was considered, and it was also well out of the town's, well out of the project budget and would have required renovations that also would have exceeded the budget.
Thank you.
Last call for questions? Okay, so I believe.
I have a question. My hand is raised, Madam Mayor.
Apologies, I didn't, I wasn't looking at the screen. Councilor McClary?
Nancy, is it possible for you to explain to us? Is there a requirement for maintenance and trash collection? I remember a couple of weeks ago, we received a, an email from a concerned business owner relative to some unkept maintenance and issues with Wittenberry Mall. So when we enter into this agreement, is there a requirement for the owner or the company to maintain the space that we are, we're renting?
The owner will be responsible for maintenance of the common areas. The town will be responsible for maintenance on anything inside the space. And we will also be responsible for maintenance of the rooftop units above the space that serve only that space, but the common areas remain the responsibility of the property owner.
What recourse do we have? I know that, I don't know if this is going to happen in the seven months, if, excuse me, in the, in the winter months, but what recourse do we have for a delay in snow removal from the parking lots, et cetera? I just have some concerns that, we know that this has kind of been an absentee landlord, and so I don't want us to enter to, into a space that is going to impact significantly our residents from the absentee landlord. So I just want to make sure that there's a recourse in our, in, in the agreement just in case he becomes an absentee landlord relative to our space, that he's able to be held accountable.
I'll double-check the lease for that. I, I don't recall off the top of my head, Councilor, what the terms of the lease are regarding their responsiveness to maintaining the common areas.
Thank you.
And the, okay. So we're essentially handing this over to the TPZ? Is that what I'm hearing?
It, it will be referred to the TPZ, excuse me, for an eight twenty-four hearing. Eight dash twenty-four is the section of the Connecticut general statutes that requires them to review any purchase of land or capital improvements to town-owned land or leases for town use to make sure they comply with zoning regulations. And then it will come back to the town council after TPZ referral for you to vote on the final lease and to authorize the town manager to execute it on your behalf.
Thank you, Nancy. Councilor Mahan?
Nancy, specifically, since Councilor Harrington asked a specific question about the MetLife building, why wasn't the old Windsor Federal Bank Building chosen as an option?
That was probably the most popular location with everyone and most desirable. Unfortunately, they have an arrangement, I believe, which was ever sourced and has first right of refusal on the property, and they were unable to get out of that, so the property was simply not available for the, for our use.
I, I was thinking that exact reason. It's very close to the library, has just enough space, seems to be in decent shape, but that's too bad.
All right. Add a good discussion there. And with that being said, I will entertain a motion to refer this to the TPZ as a lease in our packet.
So move.
Moved by Councilor McClary, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Just want to get, any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Just page down here. Item twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, consider and take action regarding tax refunds. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilor McClary and Councilor Merritt, seconded by Councilor Mahan. Any questions or concerns or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, consider and take action to retain an employment human resources consultant to review and investigate the town of Bloomfield hiring practices and appropriate funds from council contingency of up to fifty thousand dollars.
So move.
Moved by Councilor Curtin.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Mahan. Any discussion? Councilor Curtin?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to start off by saying I believe it would be in the town's best interests to enlist and aid a third party to better understand or better comprehend, comprehend the reasons why a sudden departure of so many senior-level employees. Each of us ought to want to see, to find out exactly what's going on within the town because we want the town to be a desirable place to for folks to work. I also want to, just to take this moment, just to clarify a few things, a few statements that were made in regards to the agenda item, and I think there's some conflicting information in regards to some of the emails that were made available in the package, which I was surprised, those were communication in regards to in regards to a executive meeting we had, and I posed a question to the town attorney pertaining to whether or not the position of assistant town manager do need council consent in regards to the nature of the position, and why wasn't council be able to collaborate at town manager to make sure that position is filled with someone who can step in at any time, and that's what that came from. So I think I just want to clarify that was some confusion because those emails I believe should have never been part of the package. Because if the town clerk can kind of read just into the record the outline of my question pertaining to several senior staff members within the town, pardon their positions, and there's a lot of rumors going on, and that stemmed from that issue. It had nothing to do with that individual request that I had to the town attorney that came out of an executive session. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I would ask the mayor if the town clerk could just go through and read, please, my email in regards to outlining, I think I had several points within the body of that email, just to read into the record, please.
Do you have it printed out, ma'am? Okay, um, do you have it? Can you read it?
I can, I can provide it to. Are you, are you speaking of just the first email? That details the questions that you laid out? Okay, I can pass.
Councilor Mahan, you have the floor?
I was going to pass it over to the.
Oh, you're gonna, oh, you're gonna give it to?
I, I think I speak enough.
Okay, so this is the initial email that was sent by Councilor Curtin on Wednesday, November second, twenty twenty-two, at four oh seven P M to Sharon Howe. And basically, the subject of the email was the item for the November fourteenth council agenda. to Sharon Howe. And basically, the subject of the email was the item for the November 14th council agenda. Good afternoon, Sharon. Can you please add the below item to the November 14th council agenda for the council consideration? To retain employment human resources consultant to review and investigate the following matters and submit a report to the town council and town manager with his findings, analysis, and recommendations. First question, why several recently hired employees left their employment in a short period of time? And to determine if there were proper resources provided to them? And if there were any internal management issues which prompted their employment decisions? Question two, to determine if any job vacancies over the last 18 months were filled with personnel possessing the skills and experience necessary for those job descriptions? And if the jobs were posted and included into a competitive selection process? Question three, to identify if any new job positions such as assistant town manager were created and filled by the town manager in the last 18 months? And if so, were the jobs, positions posted? Was there a defined job description? And was there a competitive selection process? Did the manager need or obtain town council input or permission to create any such new positions? And if so, were such positions approved by the town council? Question four, to review the organization of town hall and department staff to determine if adequate personnel resources have been allocated to accomplish the responsibilities and purpose of the departments or job assignments and to identify areas of concern. Question five, to advise if the town staff have received adequate direction and support from the town manager, educational instruction, staff and department meetings, written communications, confidence building, and encouragement? And are there any instances of job intimidation or like behavior that has served to undermine or impede staff morale or performance? And question six, what areas of personnel administration, employment retention and development, operational organization, resource allocation, job descriptions, council management collaboration? Need further review and recommendations?
Thank you, Counsel Curtin. One second. We're just going to settle down here. Thank you. I'm just going to scooch. Okay. Counsel Mahan?
Yeah, I, I thought at the time, and I still think now, those are very sound questions. Nothing that, in my opinion, seemed biased or targeted toward any specific individual. I do want to make it very clear that this is not about one person. This is an overview of our entire hiring and retention practices. And at the conclusion of my statement, I do want to make a friendly amendment to include the wording of investigate the town of Bloomfield hiring and retention practices. So we can clarify the motion a bit. The, the questions outlined here and included in our packet very clearly states what the true intention of this proposal is. I'm not sure where things may have went left and how things may have been mischaracterized on the initial intention from Counselor Curtin. But it's, it's very clearly here on the record. So I think that this proposal can do a number of things. The first thing is address definitively any allegations of unjust hiring practices. There are those murmurs, there are those whispers. We do need to get to the bottom of it. I've heard that from many of our residents here that came out to speak. I want to thank you all, whether, whatever side you stand on, thank you for coming on out. But we do need to get to the bottom of this and know exactly from an unbiased outside individual, what exactly is going on here in our town? We need, like I said, an unbiased objective individual. And town hall should be a place where individuals can make and grow their careers. We need to be able to figure out what are these things that are pushing some of our employees out? And how we can get them to stay? Our, is our HR having the competitive hiring and retention practices necessary to keep good employees, to keep people that are helping to make this town great? Our town is, is only better with great employees. And I've seen a number of them leave over the last year, and that has been a bit concerning for me. This is only my first year here. I haven't seen all the world. I'm only 24 years old. But nonetheless, nonetheless, I know, I've heard that quite a bit of baby. But, but, but nonetheless, nonetheless, I think this is a matter that deserves our, you know, the, the up to $50,000 that, that could be contributed to it. Because if we spend that $50,000, trust me, we're going to save a lot of money and personnel down the line. It's necessary for our town today, and it's very necessary for our town tomorrow. Thank you.
Mayor, I accept the friendly amendment by the counselor.
Yeah, may I make that, sorry, and let me just, I just said I was going to conclude the defense, so thank you. I would also like to make the friendly amendment to include the wording to fully read retain an employment slash human resources consultant to review and investigate the town of Bloomfield hiring and retention practices and appropriate the funds from town council contingency up to 50,000.
I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. There was a friendly amendment made and accepted. Mr. Town Manager, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't my intention to speak on this item this evening. But I think I need to offer some clarification and some assumptions and some things that have been said. Because ultimately, the implications could smear my reputation. And I take great offense. So let me first say, I have no issue if the council determines to move ahead with this study. I have no issue with it. Because I have no fear of what it will find. Is it the wisest use of town funds? In my opinion, it is not. But given the issues that have been presented, I want you all to know, particularly the community, that I have no fear of what it will show. I have managed honorably. I have been a manager for over 30 years in the public sector in multiple organizations, in multiple states. And one of my responsibilities in every organization over those 30 years has been responsibility for human resources. And so it would be very baffling to me that I come to Bloomfield after 30 years, and all of a sudden, there are human resource issues. So let me clear up one rumor and bad information, maybe badly reported in an article. When I was city manager of Lauderdale Lakes, very first city that I managed, and the article referred to an exodus of employees. And maybe if someone had asked, including when I was interviewed, I would have cleared this up. So let me tell you why there was an exodus of employees in that organization that the article didn't cover. I was the first town manager, the first city manager of Lauderdale Lakes. Previously, it had a committee form of government. Nine commissioners, who were the heads of departments. The residents, the neighbors of that community, 30-something thousand, ordered to change their form of government from a committee structure to a manager council form of government. And along with that were employees who were never department directors who exited the organization mainly through retirements. So that was the exodus. The one thing that I am, I'm a caring person. I love people. So anyone who would come forth and attempt to smear my name, that I have come and wrecked this organization through human resources, I have spoken to this town council from the very beginning, what my approach and philosophy is. I introduced the community building leadership team. Everything that I report onto this town council comes from meetings that I have two days before with that team. And quite frankly, I formed a very close relationship with my senior team. I take a backseat to no one with the relationship that I have built. Those are the people that I work most closely with. A reference has been made this evening to a large exodus of employees, and what are the reasons? So Mayor, if you will afford me the time, I want to correct the record on that. I want to go into the specifics.
You have the floor?
A lot of these questions I can answer that Counsel Curtin has raised. But this perception of this large exodus of employees, so let's deal with it. Let me set the record straight. Am I perfect? No, I'm not. Does everyone agree with my philosophies? No, they don't. Did I come here to maintain status quo? No, I did not. There is a Bible that I have used during the budget that goes back to the prior town council. It was the platform that I built my candidacy on and that I was accepted into this position, very proudly accepted. And I have fulfilled my responsibilities honorably. It's the 2021 strategic planning session summary that the former mayor presided over. And they counsel Curtin had a very prominent position in his various roles. The budget that was built and approved by the town council was built on this. Among the issues and priorities, protecting and promoting our diversity. And they highlighted, I wasn't here at the time, important bullet points of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I came in here and I did an assessment, starting with the management staff. And I identified issues that I presented to the town council and to the public during the budget, and council funded it to correct some issues of inequity. Had to do with salaries, and they largely affected women and particularly minorities. And we started to address some of those issues. One of the issues that I highlighted at the time during budget, and I know that there have been some issues with Sharon Howe, I'm going to call names, by some members of this council. But in my assessment of diversity, equity, and inclusion, that the former town council made one of its top priorities among the issues that I identified and went over very specifically with this council was an issue with Sharon Howe, the assistant town manager. I didn't create that position. That position existed. On the official records included in those emails that were backed up and Counsel Curtin, the reason why this issue was included in those emails, it addresses one of the specific items of your bullet points that you just read or asked the clerk of council to read. But Ms. Howe was left out. And I've got a good reason of why. And I was given direction to address these types of issues. The official record, the official management plan, before I got here, showed her title as assistant town manager. There's no question about it. It's black and white. It's there. I've shown you that information. I've shown it to the full town council.
Mayor, a point of order, please?
What's your point of order?
I don't believe that it's, it's in the council's best interest to sit here to litigate with the town manager.
Not litigate.
I'm going to allow the town manager to finish. Thank you.
This is where this issue began as far as the series of emails. And I pointed out that of the 30 management employees, the only one who didn't match their job title, it was an issue of job title only, wasn't an issue of, of a promotion, it was job title. And we corrected it with the town council's blessing. The documentation is absolutely there. Her title was supposed to have been assistant town manager. It had not been for whatever reason. That's an example of inequity, of like female, and we corrected it. She has been in that role for 12 years, with the town for 17 years. And over those 12 years, she has been the primary employee over multiple managers. That when the town manager wasn't available, she was asked to step in as town manager, as acting town manager. But yet she had never even been given the title. She served as president of the Connecticut City Managers Association. Mayor, I'd like to address, in addition to this issue, to correct the record. Started this issue, I believe, in the email series of why this request was made. But I'd like to go over the 28 positions in management. And every time that there has been a vacancy, that someone was leaving, the first thing that I did and have done is advise the town council. And when it has been a sensitive issue, I've discussed it in executive session. So there are no separations of people who have reported to me since I've been here, August 31, that I didn't make this full town council aware of the issues and certainly of the separation. So when I got here on August 31, 2021, there were 28 positions that fell into the management category. Those 28 positions do not all report to me.
Madam Mayor, point of order, well, point of clarification?
You recognized?
For the purpose of the public, is it possible for the town, the council clerk to present that email? I think it would be very pertinent for the members of the public to see what he's referencing so that they can get a visual.
She has it handy, and I'm happy to read it into the record.
I sent this communication out to the town council because I knew this issue was coming up because this misperception was being spread, and it's been further spread this evening with this large exodus of employees. I want to go through the list of all of the management employees who were in place. And when they report to me, I'm going to tell you. The chief of police, there's been no change of incumbency. The director of public works, there's been no change of incumbency. The director of finance, when I got here, we had a person in place that yes, after a few months, I made a change for the good of the organization. Then fired that employee. I gave that employee an opportunity. I'm close to that employee to this day. I invited back the former finance director as the replacement. Former finance director, her last day was on Friday. She got a better opportunity. She will continue to work with us over the next several months to help us through the audit process. Director of building and land use, the former director who is working with us now, left due to retirement. It had health issues last summer. I made the town council fully aware. I brought in a person who, I made an assessment. During probation, I advised the town council that that person, in my opinion, would not be able to fulfill the responsibilities. I didn't fire the person. I identified another opportunity. She elected to go back to her former position. The director of human resources, within a month of my coming, she left due to health issues. The director of social and youth services, no change of incumbency. The police captain doesn't report to me, no change of incumbency. Director of parks, recreation, and leisure services, no change of incumbency. Director of senior services, no change of incumbency. The town engineer doesn't report to me. The Town Engineer doesn't report to me, no change of incumbency. Chief Technology Officer. Was a voluntary change of incumbency. That person did not report to me until July one. Has started looking for another position. And were there some internal issues? Quite a few. Did I cause those issues that had existed for years? I don't believe so. So a voluntary opportunity that that person had was back last week helping me interview for his replacement. Still a close advisor. The Deputy Finance Director does not report to me, but no change of incumbency. The Assessor doesn't report to me. Position was vacant when I got here. We've hired. There's been no change of incumbency. The Assistant Town Manager. There's been no change of incumbency. The Town Clerk, no change of incumbency. The Building Official. That position does not report to me, but there was a voluntary change of incumbency. Were there issues with that employee? I had met with that employee who had had issues with the organization for years. Described in detail. But a voluntary change. Assistant Director of Information Technology got a fantastic opportunity. Told me I wanted to stay. I love this organization for the good of my family. I've got to take advantage of the money that was offered to me. Field Operations Manager does not report to me, no change of incumbency. Tax Collector doesn't report to me, no change of incumbency. Facilities Manager, no change of incumbency. Assistant Director of Parks, Recreation and Leisure Services, no change of incumbency. Assistant Director of Human Resources, no change of incumbency, except that promoted employee recently. Deputy Town Engineer, no change of incumbency. Emergency Medical Services Coordinator, no change of incumbency. Purchasing and Risk Manager, no change of incumbency. Fleet Services Manager, just learned about this myself. This position doesn't report to me. Loved Bloomfield. I've met with the employee. Got another opportunity or retirement. I'm not even sure what the reason. Senior Administrative Assistant, Police Department, no change of incumbency. And your Town Manager. Proud to be here to serve the neighbors of Bloomfield. No change of incumbency. But it is a tough environment these days. So I welcome the study. I have no fear of it. And I'm very proud of how I've managed the human resources of this organization. Very proud.
Councilor Merritt, I think that's a hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd just like to make, I talked with the, one of the persons who was resigning. And she's going to Glastonbury where they're, they, they offer better benefits than we do and it's much closer to her home. And that's what she told me the reason. And it just doesn't make sense that she left for other reason. And considering Town Manager brought her in, I don't think she'd leave because of him. But so there's a lot of this talk blaming people for them leaving. I don't think, uh, some people have been blaming, uh, certain counselors for their leaving. I don't think that's true either. I think that we're going through a period where people are leaving a lot of jobs right now. It's called the Great Resignation. And when they, they, they don't have anything to lose right now because I know they can get another job. And, and other, other towns are really looking for good people. So that's why we're going to lose some good people. Because we may not be offering as good competitive benefits. And I think we need to look into that. And I, I've recommended that to, uh, we're doing this search and comparing our, 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 our benefits and with other towns. And see, see if we can do a better job retaining people. I, I suspect that, uh, we aren't paying as well. I used to think we paid better than most everybody around, but we don't anymore. I don't believe. And I think it's necessary that we look at our packages to see how competitive we are. But I don't see that we've had a lot of resignations. And even if you call this a great resignation, we, we haven't, we probably haven't lost as many people as other towns around us. If we look around and see who's left. So I think that's a, a red herring. I, I just don't think it makes sense as a reason. This seems to me just a continuation of the campaign against the Town Manager that we, we all know happened just over a week ago. And we, we had to, had to make a big fuss about how ridiculous it was that they, this group of five people attack him. It's, it's, we, Town Managers need support. We can't keep, try to get rid of Town Managers. It just doesn't work. And this is just a continuation of that. And to hire, who's gonna hire this person? And who, how, how, do you think he's going to overrule the rulings of our Town Attorney? I mean, the Town Attorney's already answered the questions that things were done quite legally in accordance with our records. And, and the, the Town, the Town Manager has performed admirably. I, I don't see any reason at all of the question. And our HPR person who doing a good job. We're under a very difficult regimen right now because, um, the coming recession of inflation. And we have a challenging budget and the Town Manager is managing it. Uh, a couple of us on the Finance Committee pointed out that probably had, we're headed towards a recession and with this inflation that we, we have problems. And he has voluntarily held up on hiring any, any position, some of these new positions that we really don't need right away, maybe. Or we can pull off and save money. It's been a great change in our position since our budget time that it's become obvious that we're in for some tough times. And, and we certainly don't want to, um, add too many people to our payroll and then have to do something in the other direction. So I think wisely he is voluntarily delaying some of the new hires. But we really need to hire people in certain positions that just aren't filled. And it just doesn't make sense to, uh, I don't know what we're trying to do with some consultant coming in. You want him to second guess the opinion of the Town Attorney? Who's gonna appoint this guy? You, you, you want the five people that were out to fire our, our, a week ago, our, our Town Manager? You want those people to appoint this person? Are those the ones you trust? I'm sorry, but I mean, they are very upset. They no longer run the town. They no longer are Mayor and Deputy Mayor. And, and I don't see why, uh, this, what we need is a consultant to get the town council to work together. That's the consultant I need. We need somebody to sit down and put our hands in the sandbox and feet in the sandbox together and say, hey, look. We've got to stop attacking each other and attacking staff. It's, it just doesn't work for the town. We need to work together. And this kind of stuff is not gonna help us work together. This consultant, what do you expect them to do? They can't answer all these questions, not for fifty thousand dollars, probably not a lot more. So I, I think this is ridiculous. I think it's a witch hunt and I, 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 I will not support it.
Thank you. Um, point of privilege. Staff in the room, are we able to control the thermostat inside the room at all? No? Okay.
We've tried for years. We never have been able to.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Counselor Mahan.
Thank you. Um, yeah, it is quite chilly in here. Um, I just, I just find it kind of funny how Counselor Merritt, you know, brought up the point of, you know, we need to stop attacking each other. But still continues the very harmful and wrong language of saying carrying on the witch hunt of five or that five individuals are carrying on a witch hunt. You know, that's, that's exact, you, you just did the exact problem you highlighted. And as the longest serving member of this council, I, I think you would know better than any of us how important it is to choose our words wisely. Uh, because we are, we are seen as, you know, I guess, I guess bears of, of some knowledge or truth on this, uh, sitting on this council. Uh, so I would implore my colleague to please choose their words wisely. Um, and, and don't do the exact thing that you discouraged in the same statement. Um, and, and also I would say to, to another point, you know, the exact things that, uh, that Council Mayor brought up are the exact issues that a, um, that someone can come in and address such as, um, are we paying competitively? Do we have competitive packages, benefits, so on and so forth? Someone can let us know in comparison to other towns exactly what we are offering and how we can, uh, continue to be a competitive employer. Whether that's hiring practices or retention practices. I want to stay away from the very narrow language of putting it around a few individuals, whether the Town Manager is at fault for one thing. Um, or if, or if this is about the Assistant Town Manager. That very narrow language is distracting from the exact purpose of what this proposal is. This proposal, and, and I want to state again so that there's, um, so this is very clear. And, and if anyone wants to read the email, it makes it very clear. This is a broad overview of our hiring and retention practices. This isn't about one or two or three individuals. This is about our town overall and how we can move Bloomfield forward. So I, I, I'm thankful that the Town Manager isn't against, um, isn't against a consultant coming into this town. Um, I, I don't think he should have anything to, uh, to be afraid of if, uh, of course, as he states that he's been doing things to the T. Um, I think everyone on this board wants to do what is right for the town. Um, in this instance, I think a consultant is the right thing for our town. Um, so I have, this proposal has my full support.
Counselor McClary, and then Counselor Bethan Brown.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, uh, have a few questions. Um, and it may require the clerk to pull some emails up. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please pull up Attorney Mark Needleman's, um, response to those questions and read that for the public? It's a part of the same email chain. That's included in the agenda packet. I don't have it with me. I apologize.
While she pulls that up, I'm gonna go to Counselor Bethan Brown.
Thank you. I am really saddened that we have turned this into a indictment on an individual. Because I honestly don't believe that that was the intent. Um, at least not from the original email that was just read into record. I was just on public safety where I was talking with the chief about, um, recruitment. And he stated that a part of recruitment is that we're not getting as many candidates as we've had in the past. He's also stated that, uh, officers will come to Bloomfield, stay for two years and leave because there are other opportunities and better packages someplace else. So if we can get some idea of where we are going wrong, why we can't recruit and retain, that would be beneficial to us. Um, making sure that we have the best qualified candidates in our town, period. Whether it's police, whether it's DPW, whether it's in the town hall. I think for us to get into factions or camps about red herrings and witch hunts and things like that. I think it's a disservice to the employees that are currently here. I think it's a disservice to our residents and I think it's a disservice to the council. Um. This is a very unfortunate situation. And it just seems like the council is going down a rabbit hole and that we can't find our way out. Um, we have another year on council together, regardless of who wants to throw us off council for whatever reason. Um, regardless of the misinformation, the lies, the innuendos, we're here on council for another year. We have work to do and a part of that job should be. Hiring the best and the brightest so that they can service the town of Bloomfield. And I think if we can get some more information to do that, I think that's a part of our responsibility. I don't believe it's an indictment against the Town Manager or anybody else that's been hired for the town. I want to be clear. For me, it's not about an individual. Regardless of the phone calls that came from different towns about how dare you try to overthrow, take down, knock out, whatever. That is a blatant lie. My desire is to make sure that we have the best and brightest people here in the town of Bloomfield and that we are competitive. And once again, just coming from public safety, we're not. I know that people are leaving. They, I know that there's a problem with 401K, 401A pension plans. I know that there's a problem. Is there a hybrid that we can come up with? Is there a middle ground that we can come up with? We might need someone to help us with that. And it doesn't really matter what everybody out there is conjuring up in their minds. Perception may not be reality for everyone, right? So I go back to saying whatever it is that we can do to help us to be better, I'm in favor of that. And please let us try to take it away from individuals and let's put it back on process and procedure. Let's stop it. Let's all, nine of us, stop it. And then probably it will filter out, out there. Thank you.
Y'all set India?
Yes, so this email was requested to be read by Counselor McClary. Um, it's from Rick, uh, Counselor Curtin. Uh, sent on Tuesday, November first, twenty twenty-two at three oh eight PM to Attorney Mark Needleman. And the subject was response to your question. Attorney Needleman, I raise a question about a conflict of interest between the mayor, the town manager and a family member. I requested an opinion from you last week and you told me that you would ask our labor attorney for an opinion and we have yet to receive one. Below are my questions. One, does the Town Manager have the authority to create the position of Assistant Town Manager without consulting the town council? This item could have been brought up in Administration Education Council Subcommittee chaired by the mayor. His response, Attorney Needleman's, was, a new senior management position would have to be created, either explicitly discussion and informal action or implicitly as a part of the annual budget where funding for positions are set forth and approved by the council. According to Labor Council, as a general proposition, when positions are to be filled, the employee handbook calls for a posting and an opportunity for people to apply. Counselor Curtin's second question was, is this a direct conflict seeing that the employee is a relative of the mayor? Attorney Needleman's response was, conflict is often determined by the eyes of the beholder. In the instance, without any evidence that the mayor was involved in the appointment in question, there is no obvious conflict of interest, particularly when the Town Manager reports to and is accountable to eight other counselors. Further, the fact that the individual involved is a long-term employee well before the current mayor began service on the council. Reports to the Town Manager and was likely a candidate suggest that the relationship between the mayor or any counselor was not a material factor in making the appointment. Naturally, if there was evidence suggesting any undue influence having been exerted, the analysis could differ. To speculate doesn't really help anyone. While the scenario you presented allows for a fair discussion, it turns on the specific facts. If the council, um, if the town council wishes to pursue this line of inquiry any further, I suggest that as a body so indicate. These are my, these are major concerns that need to be addressed. I am also requesting that the Town Manager provide a time on whether or not this position was posted internally or externally in conjunction with our hiring practice. Thanks you, Rick Fur.
Y'all set?
Can I have your floor back?
Counselor McClary and then we're.
Thank you. Thank you. So I had her, uh, read that email because you hear certain counselors say that this item is not about a particular person. But you heard, uh, that this is focused on a particular, on particular individuals. It's focused towards the mayor. It's focused towards Ms. Howe who has given dedicated service to this town for seventeen plus years. You've heard the manager say that there has been pay inequities amongst our, amongst our staff, particularly women of color. Um, and if he got into details, I would ask everybody to go back to the, um, budget meeting where he presented, um, about the inequities and how white men are making significantly over their midpoint compared to black women who've been working for this town for twenty plus years. Um, I struggle with this because, um, it's just focusing on the, the town side and it's not focusing on the Board of Education side of things. If anybody If anybody read the the paper recently, um there were some Board of Education appointments with no job descriptions or no job postings. You don't hear council members saying, "Let's look at the whole thing and focus on the whole town, all of the services," where the Board of Education is over almost forty-seven percent of our budget. So that means forty-seven um cents of every dollar that you pay in taxes go to the Board of Education. And they're paying annuities, eighty-eight thousand dollars for the last ten years. That's over eight hundred thousand dollars. Put it in the market. Uh phew, that's a lot of money uh for deferred compensation. But you don't hear counselors talk about looking at the whole, the conversation. This is focused um on attacking the the reputation of the town manager who's doing an extraordinary job. You heard every position that he announced today. It is not because of his leadership. Um I can tell you that. Um he is here to do a job to benefit us. You can see with the hiring of India as the Director of Government Relations and Strategic Planning. How many of you all have gone to the town website looking for something and couldn't find it? Raise your hand. Maybe everybody in n- nearly half the room. Uh in India has transformed and is communicating with the public. This is a larger vision that we need to support the manager and stop getting into day-to-day operations of processes and pers- and hiring. Um we are getting too far in the weeds about, oh, he's hired this person. He's done this. He's done that. That we have our labor attorney who we pay a lot of money to. He gave an opinion. Our town attorney gave an opinion. Uh this is, this is just ridiculous. Four years ago, when I was on the council, we did a matrix study. And the proponent of this, 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 this piece of legislation here tonight was on the subcommittee. Ask him the question, why was it tabled, right? Why was it tabled? Um and I think um as the managers say, uh there's gonna be um a clean record for him, but I'm not attacking any of my colleagues, but if you dig deep, a lot of our, my, some of my colleagues up here has used their influence to make sure that some of their family members have gotten jobs, right? And then they want to call other people out. So um I think we need to be very careful. And if we're going to um if we're gonna look at the whole organization, let's look at the whole town, including the Board of Education. And I guarantee you, the Board of Education is gonna resist that because there are a lot of positions over there that have been posted. Excuse me, that have been posted. And not posted, excuse me, that have been given to people without a job search or being public, public knowledge. You can ask the labor unions. They have put in grievances. So if we're gonna do this, let's look at the whole organization. Thank you.
Excuse me. Councilor DeBeetham Brown?
Thank you. Um I am not opposed to looking at the entire town. And I am not opposed of spending council contingency, town manager's contingency, anybody's contingency to look at the entire town. Councilor McClary brought up a point that I was gonna bring up during council comments. However, he just brought it up, so I'm going to address it. At the rally for the support of the town manager, I heard, because I wasn't there, that it was brought up that the former mayor's daughters worked for the town of Bloomfield. So I want to clear that up. And they were here, but they had to leave. I have sat by silent while lies have been told, innuendos have been made. Just crazy stuff have been said. Sat by silent. And even though I was silent, people were saying that I was saying things behind the scenes and I wasn't. But this is where I draw the line when it comes to my children. My children. They didn't run for election. I did. Let me be very clear tonight. And if you're writing a story, get it straight. My family is off limits, period. Let's be clear. In two thousand fifteen, my daughter, my eldest daughter, was hired as a part-time employee at the leisure services. Before my daughter was hired, my daughter went to camp. All my kids went to camp in Bloomfield. And one of their camp counselors is relatives to other people here in town. So let's be clear. Before she became a camp counselor, she volunteered. Every one of my children volunteered at the leisure services. In two thousand fifteen, she was hired to do summer work at the leisure services. I was not an elected official. I was not an employee of the town. Two thousand fifteen, summer of two thousand fifteen. And if you all know, if you get hired at the leisure services and you do a good job, every year, they will call you back. My youngest, and and she has gone on to college, gotten a great education. She is a teacher here in the town of Bloomfield. She was hired in the town of Bloomfield. She was also hired in the town of Windsor. She wanted to come back and work at the school that she went to. I think it's a wonderful idea. Good job, darling. Good job. My youngest child, who is in college studying uh criminal justice, also works for leisure services. She was hired the summer of two thousand seventeen. I was not an elected official until November of two thousand seventeen. There was no undue influence with my children working for the town of Bloomfield in the Leisure Services Department. However, if we want to talk about other people, family working in the town of Bloomfield, that, that needs to be taken care of. I never called anybody out. I don't give a flying fig. What I will not do, I would not drag your children into it, Hen. I would not drag your children into it, Danielle. I would not drag your children into it, Rickford. That is where this needs to stop. Period. Period. Right? Because I volunteer here. When I was running for election, I worked for the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. There was a legal opinion, and it is public knowledge. Can I run for elected office while I work for the health district? And the answer was a resounding yes. So once again, let that sleeping dog let it lie. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of what we have become. And I will not take part in it. And let's, don't make me come out there neither. Come on, y'all. Listen. I'm trying to keep it all together. But I think right now, we are doing a disservice to ourselves and to this town.
You wanna speak?
Stop it.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Harrington?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My feeling tonight is if it's fifty thousand dollars, it needs to be dedicated to a consultant for us. Because I'm saying, I'm saying several months ago, we did an evaluation of the town manager. It was exceptional. Then, of course, we had the situation when he decided to interview for another job. Okay, so everyone, I mean, I was offended, but that, that's a man that has to do what he feels is, is right. If he felt he was uncomfortable, if I was in the position, I'd be looking too, okay? But it didn't set well. So now we move forward, you know, a couple of, couple of changes in the staff and whatever. I, I do believe we have a system already in place, as most municipal governments do, where when someone leaves, you have an exit interview. Has anyone talked about that? And what are the results of those interviews? Can we ascertain what the situation was from that? Everybody's talking about all it, we had a consultant put a, put, put a ARPA interview thing together. I don't want to say it was terrible, but we didn't get the response that we wanted. That was good money gone to whatever. Anyway, my feeling is that we're jumping on this thing where, yeah, there's probably some issues that need to be dealt with. Do we need a consultant to basically open up Pandora's box with this thing? I mean, I'm, I, I just feel the conflict is with us. And I do believe if we all respect each other in the, in the manner that we should, that we could sit down and iron out the differences and do a better job. We're already doing great work in the town, believe me. I, well, I'm just saying, we are. Um but, but there's so much more, so much more that we can do if we just try to work well together, not just saying it and going out the door and doing the same stuff. I'm talking about sitting down and, and conversing. We're not gonna agree on everything. Who does? So I know my, my comments were not flowery and, and all of that, but I, I just feel like, what the heck is going on? Let's do some good work. And let's start respecting each other in the manner that we should. And I believe we would move forward gracefully and successfully. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much. Uh I've sat here tonight and listened to all of the comments. Uh I, I must say that I am one that would never throw a colleague under the bus publicly. Uh but I'm very disappointed with several of my colleagues tonight, particularly Councilperson McClary, for calling into someone's family member. You don't do that, particularly if you don't have the factual information, if you're spewing inaccurate information.
Point of, Madam Mayor.
And secondly, well, thank you. All right. Okay. And, and secondly.
I, I did not, Madam Mayor, I did not.
You didn't, you didn't name the person, but you said I have a colleague with two children working for.
I did not say.
We're gonna let the deputy mayor continue.
And Councilperson Merritt, uh I've spoken to you privately, but I will say this publicly. You continue to make comments inferring that certain people are doing certain things, are voting certain ways. But I don't like it. I told you, I called you, I respect you, you're the most senior person on this council. But if you have a question, you ask me, and if I give you an answer, which I did, I told you my position, you continue to spew falsehoods. That's disrespectful, and I'm a man of integrity. If I give you my word, that's my word. So I don't appreciate you with your five-person comments and this gang and this witch hunt and all of that. So stop it. You're a grown man. Stop it. That is inappropriate. But I do want to take a different tack because I will admit that I am not in favor of hiring practices consultant. But what I will say is we've had some retention issues, some turnover. And I think it's healthy. In my organization, I have a department of two hundred and fifty people. If ten senior people leave, we are going to bring a consultant in to find out why are people leaving. It's not a personal attack. It's for the betterment of the organization. What can we determine? How can we fix this? How can we address it? And those turnovers, and I don't know if that rate of turnover is high for what we're doing, but we can find out. Uh I think that it's a, it takes a po- a toll, both financially and emotionally, when people are leaving. And my job, and I think our job, is to find out why, right? Are people leaving because of compensation and benefits? Or are they leaving because of their workplace culture?
Please keep the chambers quiet. Thank you.
Are they leaving because of lack of opportunity? Are they dissatisfied? Those are the things that we need to determine. And once we determine that, we can figure out what can we do to make the environment better for our town and all of our employees. This is not an attack on the town manager. I think this is what we should be doing. This is what my organization would do if there's turnover. We, we want to find out the root cause, and let's see if we can address it in a proper manner. And let's look at the measure, our turnover rates, and address these issues. And, you know, it could be as simple as doing, you know, an anonymous, you know, employee surveys, exit interviews. These are things that are important. You have to get to the root cause. And I don't even know if it's a problem, but you got to address it. We've had nine people leave, nine senior people leave. And so I don't know why, you know, maybe they got better jobs, maybe they were sick, maybe they retired, whatever it is. But we need to have that information so that we can better serve the town of Bloomfield. And for the record, I support the town manager. I think he's done a great job, but I want to see him continue to lead and uh be successful. Uh but I don't think having a consultant, and I know the limited basis that I'm thinking of a consultant doesn't come close to fifty thousand dollars. It's just a very easy job, is sort of trying to get at the, the retention and turnover issues to find out why are people leaving and how can we address that? And I am just, uh I don't want to get off topic, but that, that is how I feel. I do think in a limited purpose that we could have uh a consultant come in to help us determine why folks have left and what can we do to, to retain those people. And I think it is healthy for any organization to do a, a turnover like that and uh look at itself. So thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I believe the, the town manager provided hard data in relation to turnover, involuntary versus nonvoluntary. Uh so we have to, we have to defer to the facts. We have to collect the facts. For the last three years, there have been members of this council that have championed what we, the Equity Assessment Policy. In the first phase of the Equity Assessment Policy is a DEI study. Uh this is an initiative that is currently underway. It has supported the findings of correcting salaries of women of color, of women in general across the board. In Bloomfield, we have not done that very well. We are in the process, and we're, I think they're getting, these consultants are getting paid very well. It's over six figures of collecting additional data that will help us shed more light on some of the root causes that Bloomfield is not the only one experiencing throughout the nation, or the, the state for that matter, on issues of retention and hiring. And I would continue to defer to the processes and the initiatives that we have allocated resources for in the last term and, and in the current term. So there is, there is a study that we can piggyback off of to continue to discover some of the issues that are at its core here. But one of the issues, or a lot of the issue, is where I believe this item has stemmed from is the question on intimidation, on bullying, that is also in the proposal. And so while I appreciate some of my colleagues here presenting a more palatable proposal for what is on the agenda today, this request has stemmed where I believe a cruel space. And I truly believe that. Our town attorney has weighed in. Our labor attorney has weighed in, and we pay them very well, and they are good at what they do. They have stated via email, there is no conflict of interest. They have stated that there is clarity and there is no ambiguity. The town manager has further complied and shared some facts as far as the churn or the turnover that some of us are continuing to believe or say that is just not the case today. And again, Bloomfield is not the only town. We have our struggles. We, retention issues as well, like throughout the country. We also have to ask our human resources department to come to the table, and we have not done that yet. We have not said, hey, what are the root causes for some of these issues that these concerns are being raised by the council members? Let's continue to thoughtfully address these so we can further execute. So I believe that this agenda item unfortunately has derived from not a good place. And I believe this is a distraction from the work that this council needs to be doing on a day-to-day basis. We have opportunities at our door that we cannot open because we are focused on retrieving data that has been provided over and over again throughout the same term and throughout the years. We have challenges that we need to focus on as it relates to our upcoming budget season, as it relates to our economic development initiatives, and this council has a big appetite for that. And so with those challenges and with those opportunities, this conversation is done. And I'm going to call the question as there has been adequate discussion and debate. And I will then call a roll call as it relates to the motion on the floor. And for the record, I will read that again. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, consider and take action to retain an employment human resources consultant to review and investigate the town of Bloomfield hiring practices and appropriate funds from town contin- council contingency up to fifty thousand dollars. I will proceed, oh, what was, what was the amendment? Retention practices. Hiring and retention practices. We'll go ahead and proceed with the roll call. I'm gonna go down the line. Counselor Curtin.
Yes.
Counselor Debeathan Brown.
Yes.
Just give me tally here. Counselor Harrington.
No.
Deputy Mayor. Counselor Mahan.
Yes.
Counselor Politis.
Yes.
Counselor Curtin. Oh, excuse me, Counselor McCleary.
No.
Counselor Merritt.
No.
Vote, the mayor votes no. The motion does not pass. We're moving on to report from Mayor and Town Manager. I do have one announcement that I need to get out. Thank you for the reminder, Clerk of Council, apologies. On Thursday, November seventeenth, from six to seven thirty at three thirty Park Avenue. The first session, focus session, will be for the ARPA committee. That's the first session. So please come on out. On Thursday, November seventeenth, from six to seven thirty at three thirty Park Avenue. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. That is the. Last thing that I had for a report. I don't have too much. I try to report out quarterly instead of monthly. Mister Town Manager, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, Mayor. And first, let me say I did present a written report to the Town Council for the weekend. Also has been published online on our website. A near twenty-page report. Coming from all of the departments and then a couple of topical items. So let me just highlight quickly. Some of those topical. Items that I shared with the Town Council. I actually think this first item that was included is.
I'm just gonna ask you to pause one second as the chamber just quiets down a little bit. Thank you.
It's a timely discussion on budget benchmarking for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, the upcoming budget. As an introductory and important component of the town's fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budgeting cycle, we are developing, researching. And analyzing our services in comparison up to similar Connecticut municipalities. And I would like to echo something that the mayor upset. At the most recent city managers meeting, town managers meeting. Across the state of Connecticut, all managers coming and participating. This very topic of employment and retention was the major topic of of discussion. So we really aren't. Alone having some concerns. But I've also been very proud with the level of talent that we've been. Able to try, and I'm very excited to introduce some new staff members, starting actually tomorrow, that I think at the. Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee meeting, we'll be introducing. The new director of Building and Land Use. But benchmarking is very important, and I share it with the Town Council. Seven benefits of benchmarking for local government in article. So I won't go into the details. But we are going to be comparing to our neighbors. It will be a major part of the upcoming budgeting process. The second and final item that I'd like to just highlight from the report is on the community investment funds. And a lot of informations already have been reviewed by Chair Harrington from the Land Use and Economic Development Committee. But we were awarded in the first round five point five million dollars to the town of Bloomfield Library Project. So the second round, we received notice on October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Of the second round of funding. Applications for the second round of C I F funding totaling up to. Ninety-eight million dollars are due by four P M. on Friday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-three. So that ninety-eight million dollars, we're going to put in some applications. The Town Council will have to endorse those. As they did the previous first round. I am recommending that we resubmit. The previous applications, the two that weren't approved. And I am expecting through Chair Harrington's leadership tomorrow that we may have. A specific recommendation coming for the Town Council to consider for the second round of C I F funding. And that is small business. Funding for our Bloomfield businesses. And so I'll stop there, but there's so much more in this report that we put a lot of time and effort. Into is probably every issue that you can imagine. We submit every two weeks. To make the Town Council aware, and that the Town Council's request many months back, they asked that we share this with. With our neighbors, even though our new Strategic Communications Office. I will tell you, you're working on some great ideas that we've got more direct outreach to the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Town Manager. Next item on our agenda, approval of minutes. We do thank the clerk for pumping these out. I know she's been busy onboarding. And ramping up a lot of good programming that we can't wait to see. So thank you for getting us up to speed with several of our minutes here. And and I do have to ask that we approve them separately. Do I have a motion to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
Some of.
Moved by Counselor Mahan, seconded by Counselor Merritt. Any discussion amendments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
Some of.
Moved by Counselor Merritt, seconded by Counselor Mahan and Counselor Harrington. Any amendments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions or opposed? Was that a hand? Oh, no, that wasn't a hand. That was a scratch. The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the October third, twenty twenty-two minutes?
Some of.
Moved by Counselor Mahan, seconded by Counselor Merritt. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes, the mayor votes aye. Line D here, October, a motion to pass the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Some of.
Moved by Counselor Merritt, seconded by Counselor Mahan. Any questions, concerns, or amendments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. And our last point here, do I have a motion to pass the? October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Some of. Some of.
Moved by Counselor Mahan, seconded by Counselor Merritt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Look at us all agreeing.
We're gonna go to Counselor, we do have an executive session, so as we can be brief and conscious of time, that would be helpful. And we're gonna start with Counselor. Mahan.
All right, so another energetic meeting. One, I want to thank all my. Council members for bringing their best to this meeting and this conversation. Didn't perhaps go in the way that I was hoping. Okay, I do think that there are some very necessary questions that do need to be answered, and I. I hope that even though this measure didn't pass, that the work is still done. And we still get that information from H R regarding some of those exit interviews, some of the retention practices and ways that we can improve. Because regardless of where we all stand on the issue, I think we all want a better Bloomfield. Secondly, one thing that I I hope we can address in future meetings, I'm not sure. Which committee, perhaps Counselor Harrington, this is something up your alley, but there is an individual lovely, I'm forgetting her first name. But she owns a business and went to Barry Mall, and she had a question about eminent domain and how that may impact her business. And that's actually, it's a very valid question. It's something that. Honestly, and I have to be honest, I I didn't quite think about how our local businesses can be impacted. I remember when they were changing over. The plaza, I believe it's called Gillette. Is it Gillette Ridge? Yeah, when they were changing over that plaza and how that displaced. A couple shops, including a wine shop that was there. And so, you know, how does, how would eminent domain affect a lot of the businesses that are right at the heart of our town? Such as that Italian bakery, Oregonza, Type House, you know, there's there's a lot of places that. A lot of businesses that I think that's, you know, a very. Important concern that we should address and at least find some answer for. And like I said, you know, oh, and then another concern that was actually brought up was. Getting another truck for spring shed day. I think that that is a phenomenal thing that we should support, if only, especially if it's only fifteen hundred dollars. The amount of people of our town, our neighbors that benefited from that. My mom, my grandmother, you know, my my family members actually benefited and partook in this event. I I think that if we can, you know, extend just fifteen hundred dollars to get another truck so that we don't have to turn away. Members of our community, I think that's a phenomenal thing, and I definitely would be in full support. I I hope that we can see that on our next agenda item. Hopefully that will allow enough time. I'm gonna put in that request from now, Ms. Howe. So with that, I I hope you all have a great night, and thank you very much for coming on. And make, oh. That's actually, before I conclude, sorry if I'm pontificating, I'm being a bit long-winded here, but I want to thank you all for coming out and making sure that your voices are heard because. This democracy cannot function without all of you. It's not just us up here as figureheads just talking our heads off, even though. If you put us in a room, we could probably do that all night, and we have. But, you know, having you all here in this room really makes the difference, and I'm happy to see. Our town so well represented, not only by my fellow colleagues, but also neighbors. So thank you very much.
Counselor Politis.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out in force tonight to to express your opinions. It's important to be involved. You know, the democracy is, this is exactly how it works. And I think there's a lot of things that were brought up tonight that I think that we need to. Look into further. You know, I was a proponent for the consultant. To have them come in and 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 take a look and see what's going on. I'm concerned about the culture in Town Hall. And I would have liked to have seen what they may have recommended. Are we are we not paying? Are we not compensating enough? That kind of, that kind of thing. Is there, is there a management issue or whatever? I think we can all do a better job getting along, too. It's been a long time. I'm not exactly sure. If the sandbox is the greatest idea, Joe, but I mean, it might be. As long as everybody gets a toy, maybe we should be, maybe it would be a good place to start. And just. Just as Ms. Ms. Jones said, you know, fifteen hundred dollars for C E E C to get another shred truck and have another shred day. The good news is we just saved fifty thousand, so we should be able to come up with that, no problem. I don't believe, I don't believe we meet again before Thanksgiving, so I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Counselor Curtin.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by saying as well that I appreciate the residents coming out and engaging in in this process. I think it's important. For us to hear from you. I wanted to start off by saying that. Responsibility for each counselor that sits up here is not a responsibility any one individual. We're here to serve the entire town of Bloomfield. And we're the governing board that needs to address issues when they arise. When there are questions that are being brought before us. Some of the colleagues that voted no tonight received some of those concerns that were brought before. Everyone makes their decision for whatever reason. The one thing that I know, sitting here, it's not from a political motivation, it's from a standpoint of. It's to making sure that we have an environment here in town that. Employees are being treated properly. And frankly, I'm not really concerned who the individual is, is to address those concerns. And for us to. To not see fit to invest in making sure that we have. A workforce. That's reflective, number one, of the community, to make sure that. Members are being treated and they're not forced out. To make sure that the proper protocol is being addressed when it comes to posting of positions. And it's interesting for me to sit here tonight and listen from some of the folks that referred to the town attorney being. A man of integrity when he made decisions on issues that everyone felt. That he was doing something wrong. The attorney provides opinions to the council. That's his job. The council is this body to. Act upon evidence, information that we're receiving. I believe. It's a mistake by this council tonight. To not bring in the resource. To really find out what's going on at Town Hall. Some of us may be happy that some of the things that are happening are fulfilling some of the needs. That we desire. I know there's a lot of motivation, but I believe it's a major concern of mine that we're not addressing the issues and we're focusing on one individual. That's not our job. Our job is to make sure. That the town manager. And his staff is executing. The policies that the council set forward. Is to make sure that. Town staff, if there are issues. And they're brought before us. For us to address those concerns. And I felt that we fail. Staff tonight. And. It's difficult to ask an administration to investigate themselves. I believe. Like my colleague have said. That there's a lot of things going on within Town Hall. And. We'll just have to see, but very disappointed in the action tonight, but it's 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 part of our democracy. And. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you to everyone that came out, right? Whatever side you come down on, the fact is you're letting your voice be heard. I do want to say thank you to the residents of Bloomfield who heard one side of a story, who called me. To get my side of the story or to get a different side of the story. Residents who invited me into their home to sit down and have coffee and chit chat. So thank you to those residents. There's a couple of our residents that have lost loved ones. I was able to provide some support to them. Please know that you're still in our thoughts, in my thoughts and prayers. I went to a. Banquet for B J S A, the Bloomfield Junior Soccer Association. It was a wonderful thing to see. Students cheering for each other and parents out supporting their students. So. We say once again, congratulations to the students, the parents, and definitely the coaches. I'm gonna do two quotes. The first quote that says, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." I like that quote because I believe that we all have a responsibility. To ourselves, to our community, to our colleagues. And I think we need to take those responsibilities seriously. Words matter. Words have impact. Words hurt. Words kill. Words divide. But words also bring life. Words also bring unity. And I think we must be very careful. Very, very careful. Of our words. Because they will come back. And they will bite you. And sometimes slap them in the face and knock you down. So we need to be careful of our words. An environment that is not safe to disagree. Is. In a, an environment that is not safe to disagree in is not an environment focused on growth. It's an environment focused on control. That's not what we do here. We're supposed to get all the information necessary to make the best decisions possible for all of Bloomfield residents. But what we have done here is we have created a divide. Not just on the council, but in our town. And we've created that art, that divide with our words. With our lies. With our manipulation. With our divisive behavior. And we all have to take stock. We all have to take some. Introspection. Time is short. And what we do here counts. Right? We don't rally. We're not supposed to rally. To, for for five. Insurrectionists or five. What did he, lynch mobs? Man, you just don't understand what your words mean and what your words can do. We need to. We need to do better. And I say we as an inclusive we. We weren't elected to do witch hunts, but we were elected to be individuals with our thoughts. And if anyone brings an item to this council, the most we can do is discuss it, take a vote on it and move on from it. I think we're doing a lot of disservice. And me for one, I'm sick of it. We have seniors who want to age in their homes and they can't afford to. We have people, young people who are trying to find jobs and who want to be successful at a career. We have people who need oil for, for winter. We have people who need turkey for Thanksgiving. And we are creating a divided town. We have issues on the council, in town hall, we have issues. And we need to face them and we need to fix them for the betterment of the town and for the betterment of ourselves. Now, I might have gotten a little bit hot a few minutes ago. I won't apologize for it. Not when it comes to my family. And I'm gonna ask you, if you hear something and if you mean this council any good and if you mean the town any good, pick up the phone, call, ask, get some information. We don't need to, to form gangs and groups and things like that. It's one town. We all live in this one beautiful town. Let's stop assassinating each other. Because if we go around digging each other's eyes out, you're gonna have a bunch of blind people. And you cannot throw mud without getting your hands dirty. And I know that I talked for a long time and I don't mind it, I just want to get it off my chest. We're better than this. We are better than this. So all of those out there who want to form a faction, stop it, council. Stop it. And I promise you, the next time somebody call my name and tried to defame my name, I will call my attorney. Because this is foolishness. We are here as public servants. It's my time. We're here as public servants and we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. We're trying to do the best we can with what we have. All this other stuff, if any one of us fails, the town of Bloomfield fails. That's how I see it. So I try to invest in what I'm doing. We're not gonna get it all right all the time, but help us help us. Please, one town, it's one town for God's sake. And you know what, in twenty twenty, in the height of the pandemic, it was the nicest town in the state of Connecticut and you said it right, Kevin. Now we're crazy. People are looking at us like we're crazy. Bridgeport's calling, what's going on in Bloomfield? Hartford's calling, what's going on in Bloomfield? What's going on in Bloomfield, Bloomfield? Thank you for coming out. Thanksgiving is next week. There are people in our town that don't have social services giving out turkeys. Uh, Blue Hills Fire is giving out turkeys in Thanksgiving dinner. Let's try to be neighborly. Let's try to sit down and be grateful for what we have and where we are. And let's try to do better. And when we're done with that, maybe say some prayers. Council, we have work to do. And we need to step up as a council and do that work. And some of that work might involve town hall. It doesn't mean that we're micromanaging. It doesn't mean that we're witch hunting. It doesn't mean that we're red herring. It means that we're trying to make sure that we're surveys, serving our town and that we have the best people in our town. Let's stop it, let's stop tearing each other down. If I ask a question, it's not, ooh, oh my God, what is she trying to do? She's trying to get an answer. That's all. You don't have to call Ms. Mary and say, oh my God, Suzette's trying to burn downtown hall. No, just wants to get an answer. We are forming a very toxic culture. It's like cancer and I know about cancer, been there, done that, was in treatment for it. But if you don't cut out the cancer, if you don't cut it out and if you don't do some treatment to it, it will come back. And when cancer comes back, it comes back worse. So let's do better.
Counselor McClary? He's sitting on the wrong side.
Um, I just want to be very clear, uh, that my statement was not talking about anyone's children. And it was mischaracterized again, like always by, uh, certain members. I don't believe in bringing people's, uh, family into it. I did not call anybody's name. The quote was, "Some of us on this council have used our influence." I repeat, my statement was, "Some of us on this council and in this town, holistically at the Board of Educat- looking at the Board of Education too, as the labor unions have put in a grievance. And so if we're gonna focus on town hall, we need to focus on the whole organization." I did not call anybody's name. I didn't say anything about anybody's children. But what is clear is that the mayor and her family has been attacked. Her aunt, who happens just to work for this town, has been attacked. And you heard it in the email. You heard it, you read it. This all started from that. And everybody keeps talking about why Stanley's looking. Can you tell why he's looking? This is the reason why he's looking. We can't talk about the housing rehabilitation program because we can't agree on it because a certain council member brought it up. We can't talk about the Small Business Development Fund that was written by a certain council member. He had to pass it off to another one because other council members would vote no. Because somebody brought it up. We can't talk about the, uh, getting small businesses and, uh, restaurants in the community and providing gap funding for the community because of one counselor brought it up. There are a lot of things that we want to do and that are in the works, but it's all depends on who brings it up. And so when they say, let's come together, there's practical policy sitting on the table right now that the manager can't even get us to agree on. And a part of it, you heard it, he has laid it out, folks. There are certain individuals who have not accepted the election results. And they are creating a culture, not just for him, but the town staff. And I guarantee you, if any of one of the public members asks the town staff in town hall, who's the problem? They'll point right back at you and say this council. Because there are people who are reaching out. And forgive me for talking about what we talked about in executive session, but it's very, it, it needs to be, it needs to be out there. We're gonna be, if we're gonna be clear. There are council members who are individually undermining the town manager, going to directors saying, you need to be prepared for being town manager because we want to get rid of Stanley. Ask him, go visit, go, go talk to him, he'll tell you. There are actual members on this body undermining him. So this item on the agenda tonight, as much as they want to say it's about the culture of the organization and salary, we have a salary adjustment going on right now. We're, we're exploring it. Stanley, what is it called? Is the, uh, the H R director put it in her, in the budget that this council voted on? Can you tell me what it is called?
Classification and Compensation Study.
So we talk about doing, looking at salaries? We have it going on, folks. We just have to be a, a educated public and just read the material and participate and listen to, and listen to people. Because guess what? The manager is putting it out there. It's already going on. There is not a culture, I went through, three and a half weeks ago. I went to the Association of, um, Local Municipal, uh, Finance Directors. Uh, they had their annual meeting, uh, in Old Saybrook. And one of the directors, um, from Meriden said to me, um, I'm getting ready to retire as the finance director. And the only reason why I am still here is because we can't find people to go into the municipal government field. So there's a shortage of town managers, there's a shortage of economic development directors. There's a shortage of everything when you look at local municipality government employees. The reason why is because in the early nineteen hundreds, nineteen eighties, there has been this move to go into local government to get pensions. You put your time in and it's very good jobs. You stay, you get your pension and you, you do well. I C M A, which is the, uh, professional organization for local government, you can go on their websites. They have all types of briefs and they, they are recruiting, they're having job fairs. This is just a field that is just very hard to come by. People are not coming, young people are not going into these fields. So the folks that are in this field, if Southernton says, oh, we're gonna give you a hundred and ten thousand dollars and they're making eighty, they're gonna go there. And by the way, they got a pension fund, we have 401K. So they're gonna go there because it's better for them. If Sinsberry comes and said, we're gonna give you two hundred and ten thousand dollars, they're gonna go. So as Counselor Merritt said, it is the great resignation. And so I am ready and prepared to, to continue to write policy and focus on the issues of Bloomfield. But we need every, five votes. Five votes, housing rehabilitation program, been sitting, written, worked with the town staff. Program is to help seniors get their, their homes, ADA. We're not gonna put that on the table because Counselor McClary wrote it. The Small Business Development Fund that Counselor McClary worked with the staff on and wrote the policy, we're not gonna vote on it. I got, I got text messages from members of this, this, this council saying, we need a truce. If you support me on this, I'll support you on that, on that. It's crazy, folks. I'm just ready to get to work and deal with the issues. Guarantee you, come February, we're gonna politicize the potential tax increase. We should not have given the public, this council should not have given the public a tax break this year. But we as a council understood, coming out of COVID, coming out of COVID and inflation, that we needed to do something. We needed to do something. Our hands are tied, we have one source of revenue and that comes from you. Yeah, we may get grants, we may get tax dollars from the state, but the primary sole responsibility of, is the funds to fund this, this organization comes from you as the public. And so there's gonna be some tough discussions and people, I ask you, I really beg of you, participate, pay attention and don't let people politicize the potential tax increase. That may or may not come. The manager and the finance team on email, folks, give me a forecast, give me a forecast on this, give me a forecast on that, give me a forecast. It's very toxic. If you all can see what happens behind the scenes by certain council members, you will be, you will be disgusted. Town staff constantly answering questions after question after question. Every time the town staff gives an answer, there's another question. It's the same, it's the same question in a different form, just so I can, they can get, I got your moment. There's no I got you moment from folks leaving this community. Stanley Hawthorne is doing a very good job. He's one of the best managers that I've seen in a very long time. A very long time. We just need to focus on high level policy and let him do his job. So folks, please continue to come out, read the council agendas, attend subcommittee meetings and you'll get the true story. But tonight, what I saw tonight was just, it was unfortunate because it was directly targeted at Sharon Howe and Danielle Wong. I don't care what no one says, it's clearly in the emails. It is not about a culture study, it's not about a financial, a, a salary adjustment or salaries, wage management. It is directly at Danielle Wong and Sharon Howe and their family. And it's in the emails, folks. Thank you.
Counselor Merritt.
Thank you, Mayor Merritt. I, um, I apologize for not being there in person, but I was at a spreader event yesterday and where a lot of the people are just tested positive and, uh, so I can think of very wise that I should show up in public. I also have to confess that I got a job, uh, working with the town crew mowing the lawns around the schools back in the nineteen fifties. And I got it explicitly because my father was on the town council. So I, I want to confess and, uh, if, if I, I, I can't afford to give the money back that I earned, but, uh, I'm sure that was. Anyway, I, I'm, I'm not too worried about it. But I, I'd also like to say that I'm very happy that we are already dealing with the problem of comparing our, our compensation, uh, for employees with, uh, uh, other towns and, and seeing if we are not competitive. I brought up the 401K, uh, maybe we need a hybrid type of thing to keep employees because we're, we're definitely losing some because we don't have, uh, the traditional retirement plan or something approaching it. And I, I think there is a need to keep looking at that to be competitive because, I don't think we're losing more employees than anybody else is, but we certainly need to make sure that we are competitive with employees. And look at that, so I, I hope we continue that, but I'd like to move on. Hope this council can start working together as we approach the budget. I, I think we're looking at the important issues and our town manager on top of it. I'm very pleased the way he's dealing with trying to keep expenses down as we get into this next year because it's gonna be difficult. And, um, and as we approach the, uh, the budget season. So with that, I will sign off and, uh, drive you brief, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harrington.
Phew, okay. So I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. I know it's been long and it's been challenging. One of my first things to say is words matter. And we just need to be more aware of how we address each other verbally, texting, email, whatever. I just think sometimes the tone that's laid may change the manner of the response. So, okay. So with that said, I do want to make mention of Officer Green, who was a part of the police force here for many years. And he is embroiled in a pension issue. And I hope at some future point soon that his, uh, situation can be addressed and that, uh, he will be made whole. Also, in reference to, um, Winton Berry Mall, there has been concern about the displacement of, uh, organizations or businesses there. I had a conversation this past weekend with the owner of the dance studio. And he proposed that we consider, uh, some of the larger tenants, uh, for co-ops. So that may present some other ideas for us as we move forward. But I have not a litany of conversation. We've already had much of that. I just want us to move forward with thinking before we respond or react. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much. Uh, a couple of things, I, I wanted to clarify, uh, one thing in particular. My vote on the consultant was based on the fact that I fully support having someone come in to do retention and turnover work, but I am not at this point convinced that we need someone to come in and look at our hiring practices. And I'm more than happy to share the details as to why with individuals. Uh, if you want to know, feel free to call me. But I do think it's important that we do take a look at what's happening with our organization because for me, that's first and foremost importance that, uh, we have the right people in place and that when people leave and we find out why they're leaving and find out how we can improve our culture and the work environment. Uh, secondly, I wanted to echo with, uh, Councilman Harrington, uh, mention about Officer Green. Uh, it's very important that his issue and his case is fairly inequitably resolved. And, uh, to the extent that, um, he needs to know that, he should know that I stand fully in support of him. Uh, I don't know all the facts, but I'm hoping that, uh, we are able to learn more about his pension situation with the town of Bloomfield. I, I wanted to also echo some of the comments about the, um, Electronics Recycling Day and Shredding. I got called from some neighbors who were very pleased with the fact that Bloomfield, uh, provided the opportunity, uh, the constructive feedback that I got from The constructive feedback that I got from three residents was that one woman got there at nine thirty and she had to go home. And it started at nine o'clock, and I'm hopeful that we can provide funding so that we can provide more time and access to our residents. Next, I want to personally acknowledge and thank our staff. We had a lot of conversation here tonight, but I I can't tell you how important it is to me that they are recognized and that we publicly acknowledge them for the hard work that they put in and doing their jobs and representing the town of Bloomfield. And we could not sit here, we could not do what we do without the staff. And I I think it's very, very important that we recognize them, particularly at the end of the year. It's been a tough year for all of us. I I want to go off script for a second and thank people for their advocacy and coming out and supporting the issues that are important to them. I must admit that it's a little frustrating to receive communication from folks who are on one side or the other of an issue, and they've only looked at one side and they don't know both sides, and they only talk to one or two people on the council who they like, and they've made opinions. It's very disconcerting. If you want to know my position, I'm always open. Feel free to call me, eight six zero nine one three eight one five nine. I'll always get back to you. There are some people who I respect a lot, and I was very disappointed with this latest issue that we're talking about tonight, who people will come out and they send emails bullying you. It's like, if you don't support me, if you don't vote this way in this issue, I'll never support you again. And don't bully me because I'm gonna make an informed decision based on what I think is gonna be in the best interest of the town of Bloomfield. We may agree to disagree, but I'm gonna do what I think is in the best interest of the town. In summation here, we have completed our first year of council as this group here elected in November of last year. We've had some successes. I'm very proud. And when we were outdoor knocking, the biggest issues that we heard were taxes, roads, infrastructure. And when I look at some of our successes, I think a couple of things that we've accomplished. One is infrastructure. We devoted a lot of money to infrastructure. You look at our roads, you can see them, you can see that the roads have been repaved. We're also putting a lot of money into our drainage systems and all the things. Big thanks to ARPA. But the council made a concerted effort along with the town manager to invest in infrastructure. The second, I think, accomplishment was, you know, we passed the budget with a tax decrease, right? First time in a long time. We're not sure what the future holds, but it was important to a number of the members of council coming out of COVID that we show our residents that we were thinking about them. And so we were able to make that happen. And then I only have a short list, but the other thing that I thought was very important that we accomplished this year is everyone may know that the library building project, we passed a referendum for about thirty million dollars due to COVID and the increases in prices and supply chains. The cost went up to thirty-five million dollars, and we were five million dollars under budget. We successfully got five point five million dollars through the state of Connecticut, through the Community Investment Fund. It took a lot of work, but we were able to make that happen. And now that project is gonna happen on budget with not with no cuts, right? We were talking about reducing it and scope by ten percent, twenty percent. And our our citizens deserve the best, and we are gonna have two buildings that we're extremely proud of. So I say all that to say, all in all, we had a good first year. In my opinion, a good sign of good leadership begins with transparency and accountability. And notwithstanding our accomplishments, I believe that we have not met our promise and commitment to the citizens of Bloomfield. When we were elected, we we promised to work together as one body for the betterment of Bloomfield. And for that, in my opinion, we all are responsible, not one member of the council, but all nine of us. And if you can't be accountable and own up to it, then we've got a problem. Because again, there's no one person that's causing issues. We, as a body, are responsible for the work. If it's not getting done, then it's all nine of us, in my opinion. I am optimistic and committed to doing all within my power in the next twelve months to make sure that we change that course of action. We've got to come together. We owe it to you all, we owe it to ourselves. And I think that we can do it, we will do it. And some of the things that you've heard tonight from myself and some of our colleagues, you can see it's kind of a toxic culture, coming at one another, being critical of one another in public. That's not how we should operate. And going forward, I commit, at least on myself, for myself, not to have that happen going forward. I just want to thank all of you for coming out. Thanks, folks who are participating via Zoom. This is a job that takes a lot of time. I I didn't realize what I was getting into when I ran. But it's something that I take very importantly, and I want you all to know that we are fighting and working hard to make sure that we can have the best that Bloomfield can get. And I will cut it there, but again, thank you all for coming out. And I commit in working with my colleagues to do a better job of representing the town of Bloomfield and working together for the town. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, thank you so much, everyone, for coming out and weighing in. It is an early night for the council because we've had longer nights. But it is important to hear to hear everyone and voice the opinions, whether you like it or you don't like it. I I do want to take the time to. I I want to echo the Deputy Mayor and Councilor Harrington in regards to Officer Green. I met Officer Green about three years ago, and we've been getting to the bottom of some things. And so we have requested an item to discuss further on what the council can do in our role to support what is the right thing to do. And so if it is within our power as council to correct a past mistake of the of the town, and and we can align on that, then we should be able to to do that, depending on what what comes out. So we will have an update. We don't have all of the newest the newest information regarding some of those things. But I'm hoping that we have some a pathway forward. I completely support Shred Day, Ms. Jones. Thank you for coming out. I was there on Shred Day, and I received a lot of upset folks that our shred truck was full. And I totally support making sure that we have multiple opportunities for folks to recycle and and dispose of some of the things that have been sitting throughout the the year. So we'll definitely make sure to to make sure that that is a discussion when it comes time to allocate resources. I want to take the time to also thank the staff, in particular, tonight. My aunt, Sharon Howe, who's worked for the town for seventeen years, and I believe lived here since she moved from Jamaica. I have lived here all my life as well, graduated from Bloomfield High. And it is a small town. And so you're probably gonna have a few people that live here, work here, serve here in many different capacities. And I think that just makes the town stronger. And so, Councilor Merritt, you don't need to return the the money you earned from mowing the lawn. And with that, I am, as I said, from day one, and elected to this this position on the as a body of this council. I'm ready to do the work. I asked my colleagues to focus on the work. We have a lot going for us. We've accomplished so much in so little time this year. And I think it's time to shine the light on the things that are helping this community and supporting this community and making it better for every taxpayer. And I think we have the chops to do it. We just got to figure out how to do it together. So with that, that concludes the open part of our agenda. I will. I will, I'm gonna amend this a little bit. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to move into executive session but at ten thirty-eight to give councillors just five minutes to just walk around if they need to or just head to the restroom. So with that, do I have a motion to enter into executive session around ten thirty-eight? All right, any objections? Hearing none. See you back here in a. Oh, I do it with the town attorney, the town manager, the assistant town manager, the full body of the council, and. Attorney Bill Ryan and Attorney Pierce.
Correct. Thank you.
Wonderful that they were able to attend. Okay, see you back here in five minutes. Thank you so much.
If you had told me the truth. Oh, it's like that?
For the, oh, so Dwight, so what can I, so can I close it? reopen?
How are you, Miss Register? Have you been sworn? I don't know. Are you? Oh, oh, not.
So what do you want me to do?
Are we doing it in this room?
So can we can we just use open session and I can turn her? Yeah, we're just doing that. So I just want to know if I log off to this.
Out of closed executive session, we are back in regular session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And you opposed. Have a wonderful night. Thank you for joining.
Good night.
You made the motion.
Put me down. I made the motion.
Yeah, he canceled my motion.